Okay, no alternates to see.
I think Larry's.
Are you?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were a regular.
I was.
Okay, so I will seat you for beer.
Okay.
Any changes to the agenda? John, anything? Okay.
Okay.
The minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-three, any corrections? I'll make a motion. We accept them as presented.
Second.
Well, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I understand.
Justin, I understand. Do we need a, we have a bare minimum for a quorum, do we need all four to vote in favor to pass the minutes?
No, just a, just a majority of the members present.
Thank you.
Also, you said you watched the recording of it, didn't you? So you could vote if you wanted to, if you spread the minutes.
Oh, I'll, I'll stay just because I went here.
Okay, thank you. Audience of citizens, anything anyone would like to bring up that is on our agenda? We do have a student guest. Thank you for observing.
Of course.
Under unfinished business, item six, six point one, Jacob. The chill, chillio. Necatillo, high-class detailing intent of site plan and sign applications for auto detailing, tinting, audio, and lighting installs at two thirty-one Route Six, Unit C. To that end, the applicant, do you like to, are you in attendance here?
I'm online.
Would you like to talk about your application? Your name is?
Jacob Necatillo.
Okay, and Jacob, would you like to talk at all about your?
Uh, whatever you need me to answer, I'm more than willing to, yes.
Okay, so you don't want to make any statement about your application? You just want us to review the printed material?
I talked to John earlier. He was talking about you guys needed a something else about the parking. And then I know I sent John extra stuff earlier. Cause I met with him last week.
There was a desire on the commission's part at our last meeting to see some sort of site plan that we could identify, would help us identify exactly what is proposed to be done where. And that's the purpose of the site plan review. Is for us to understand what, what the site plan encompasses and what you're going to be doing where. And the, um, the photo aerial maps, uh, there was some question whether that was sufficient. Does that describe what the result of our last meeting was?
Well. Right, so there was some, there were some questions about exactly where the activities would be taking place on the site. The, the aerial photos, um, were not, were not totally clear. Um, so we met with, uh, Connie and I met with Jake to go through his, his operations and get a little bit more information. And we've included, uh, the stuff that Jake has submitted, additional things in the packet, including, uh, the list of, list of chemicals, a, um, sort of signed dimensions and, and some photos of where the signage would go. So, and, and, um, I had, I had asked for a revised sort of markup map. But, um, I think we can, we'll be able to look in at this aerial. You can see on the screen the aerial photo of the, um, of the site in question. Cause again, no physical changes will be taking place. All activity will be taking place in the building, which is this, this, um, brown building with the label, uh, two thirty-one C on the aerial photo that I have on the screen. All operations are going to be taking place there. Jake, you have what, three garage bays that you're going to be using?
Correct. I got the three, like, if you look at where the back patio is towards the upper part of the screen, I have that for parking for the side, and then I have three bays from that backside going this way, correct?
So he's got, so you have, you have some parking area at the top of the screen, is that right?
Correct, and then I could also park in front of the bay doors as well.
So if he has customer, he has customer parking inside the bays, while they're working on the cars, and then customer parking in this, in this paved area in front of the, um, the building here. Um, and that's basically the extent of the, the physical operations. Everything's taking place basically in the, you know, the upper sixty percent of this building. Um, and again, with no structural changes to the building. Jake also submitted, uh, some signage, um, rendering, which I think is in the packet. If you can see on the screen, this sign right here will be, um, expanded vertically to the full, uh, fifteen feet allowable. Um, and Jake's operation will be listed as well as the wellness center. Um, and then, um, a space for a future, uh, for a future tenant. Um, and then Jake also proposed to put on the gate, basically a, a hanging sign, um, that would be, that will be affixed to the gate, um, with his business name and identification. Um, so those are the only, the only physical changes would be this sign would be replaced with a larger sign. And then a, a, a sign would be placed on the, the, the gate, which can be open and closed. Mike, representing that correctly, Jake?
Uh, you are.
In the form of a banner, I think I saw. Is that what you're proposing?
Is it a banner sign, Jake?
Uh, yes.
Is, is that, um, the total square footage of the sign, is it within the realm of, uh, acceptable under our regulations, John?
That's, that's, they, they designed the sign to be, to be within the regs. It's allowed to be, um, sixty square feet, so they're doing it basically, uh, I'm sorry, uh.
Thirty-two square feet?
No, no, so it's up to, it's fifteen feet by four feet, I believe.
It was gonna be five feet by four foot for each sign.
Oh, right.
What, give everyone, uh, twenty square feet, and then we're gonna do five square feet at the top of the sign for the number for two thirty-one for all the businesses. So that would be the total of, uh, the sixty-five square feet allowable for the whole signage.
Yeah. Right, yeah, it's, it's three, three, five by fours, so twenty, twenty, twenty is sixty, plus, um, the, the one by five or the, uh, the address number. So that's a total of sixty-five.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I just, I want to bring this up only because I, I think it's a a point issue from the last meeting, and that is that, I don't think we've ever seen an application where we didn't really have some sort of a a drawing, something that illustrated geometrically what the site was consisting of. And thus comes the name site plan review. And I, and I'm not sure we need one here, but are we setting a precedence that we can be as loose with our rules as this all the time? Is there a precedence that, John, by us doing that?
Um, I, I would say the, the precedent you're setting is, you know, if, if you believe that you have enough information about what is happening on this site, which again is just activity essentially inside buildings and not changing anything physical about the site other than the signage. Yes, I mean, it's called a site plan, but, but like literally no changes to the site are proposed. So there, you know, you, you sort of need to establish if you have enough information based on available mapping.
I tend to, I tend to agree. I mean, I'm just, again, I put the, the application is site plan review, and there's no site plan. But he meets all the conditions that always were met. So there's, I guess I just wanna, I wanna, I don't wanna set us up for somebody else coming in and says, hey, you know, we didn't, we didn't ask that of so-and-so, and, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, so, you know, the, the reason that you would, you would need a site plan would be to determine if, you know, the proposed activity, you know, changes the, changes the, the, the ground, changes the, the land use in a way that would, you know, affect various conditions.
So just as an example, we, if, if we were reviewing, and we did this for Rode Plaza a number of times, there was discussion about where's the dumpster gonna be, where's the parking gonna be, where's the handicap parking gonna be, or, or, or van accessible parking gonna be? We don't have any indication of that stuff here. We're just saying, well, he has room for it, right?
Right, well, so I, I would, that's, that would be the statement. I mean, Jake, can you, can you tell the commission a little bit about your interaction with clients? You know, what, are you, are you going to have a need for significant customer parking?
Uh, it's gonna be dropped off basis because there's, obviously it was just basically a fifteen hundred square foot, three garage door bays. So it's essentially gonna be drop-off appointments because there's not, uh, gonna be a waiting room. So it'd be them dropping off their cars while we do the work, and then they would pick them up later. And so there's really no need for, per se, handicap parking because it would be a drop-off, and there's no stairs to get inside the building. It's just a door onto the, into the, uh, basically the work area, and then we got, and then there's a little office next to the bathroom on the inside. So that, well, way we could all take payments. And then, you know, uh, do receipts and stuff like that. But other than that, you know, it's not gonna be, you know, no one's gonna wanna wait three hours for their car to get tinted, or, you know, for detailing their car, and we gotta take out the seats, and you know, vacuum shampoo, the whole rugs and stuff like that. That could take three or four hours. You know, so they're not gonna necessarily be waiting while we're doing all the work. So it'd be basically drop-off appointment. And then they would pick it up at a later time, unless if, for the event that, you know, their car had their window smashed out, and then they only needed one window, which could take, you know, twenty-five, thirty minutes, then, you know, they're more than welcome to wait right outside on the, on the concrete blockage, or walk to Dunkin' Donuts, which is right down the street. You know, but for the main part is it's gonna be drop-off only.
Would you, would you feel comfortable updating your statement of use to, to say that that's what it was, drop-off only?
Uh, yes.
Okay, but what does that tie into? If he changes his statement of use?
At least I may have some documentation in the file that says that it's a drop-off only business. That way, if it ever changes, then at least we, we have some sort of foothold to say, hey, you know what, there's been a change here, you need to come see us again, or at least somebody has something to say about it. Turns into this business growth. So let's say we want it to be a success. I mean, ultimately, if, why are we doing this if we don't, right? We wanna see it succeed, we want this gentleman to do well. And if he does, and this goes gangbusters, and he's got twenty cars, or twenty-five cars, or whatever, will it become an issue for somebody? Will it? I don't know. But we, I think we need to at least look ahead for it. Are you concerned about that?
I'm just concerned that there would be other mechanisms that would initiate other interactions of his business growth. He would probably have to do other things that would, that would even override just putting that in the statement of use. I don't, I just don't know that it would be necessary. I think when we, I think the question originated is whether you need a more detailed site plan, what precedents we're setting, and kind of where my, my mind went was if we're setting a precedent, it's actually a good one. Because we can see this, he's not changing anything physically. He's occupying a, a set of bays with specific limitations now. So there wouldn't necessarily need to be a huge site planner or something submitted. And I think that's a good thing, just makes it easier. Um, and then if his, his business organically grows, that's something that he would have to consider, uh, to, to, to make work for him. Um, I just, I, and maybe I'm missing something, I just don't know that.
What other, what other description would we have in our records to indicate what his business is? I mean, we have nothing. We have verbiage, and the verbiage goes away when, who knows what becomes of the recordings, right? We do an abbreviated version of.
Oh, of a minute, yeah.
The abbreviated version of the minutes goes on paper, and that goes into file, but we, we, do we, do we need some sort of documentation of what his business exists as when we approve it?
Well, it, it's in, it's in his statement of use.
Yeah, that's a distress point he's doing.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
That goes in, that goes into his, his file, in the, in the, in the file for his, his address.
That's, that's my point. So if his statement of use indicates that it's a drop-off business, not a, not a car storage, you know, you know, I, I may be overthinking it. Tell me.
I'm gonna make a suggestion. You know, if we're inclined to approve this, why don't we, in our approval, state, um, subject to the understanding that there is, uh, uh, no ongoing customer parking being designated because it's a drop-off business? If, if that's a concern. I, I really, John, I'm, I'm gonna say this, and, I, I this is probably at the limit of how minimalistic an application needs to be, to be reviewed by us. And I would have, really would have liked to have seen a line-drawn map indicating exactly what was where, and what modifications were being done here, meaning the sign, and where the temporary or the, the banner sign was.
Yeah, I didn't, I guess, did the banner sign not end up in the packet? Did I not forward that to you, uh, John?
The, um.
There's one on the fence indicated at the end of the last page, or nearly at last page.
The, oh, yeah, there, um, the email packet. I think, I think it's the, are these pictures? Do you mean the three photographs that, that Jake sent?
Yeah, I don't.
Or?
I don't see it in the PDF packet that I, that I sent, or that I got.
This, sorry, hold on.
It's probably this.
There's a picture with a black square. Isn't, isn't the three photos?
Yeah.
That you emailed me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I kept, I kept them separately in the document.
Oh, okay.
That, uh, the commission did get them.
Oh, okay. Um.
So when we're looking at, just, you know, we usually like to look at a site plan that indicates the totality of the application. This is pretty spread out. I'll use that in a gentle way. And it's, it's, I can understand Walt's concern, because this is not up to the normal standard where, where we normally expect to see for a site plan, um, review. Um, even, even with no site improvements, no physical changes, usually, um, a lot more detail comes in as far as what's gonna be done where on the site and, and so on. Um, I'm comfortable going forward with an approval, but going forward, I would want to see an, an aerial, um, plan of the site. Um, even if it came from the GIS system, indicating all the details on it, and where, what changes are being done where, with an arrow and everything contained. Instead of, we, we have a lot of photos and everything, and these aren't all gonna be part of the approval, all of the photos. And this, having a site plan that, in one concise document, details what's going on on that site, would be a lot more helpful going forward. I don't want to hold this gentleman up. I really appreciate the, he's locating his business in Columbia, and we want to do everything possible to support that. But I think, you know, going forward, if, if we could expect a different level of submission would be a lot more advantageous.
There's, there's so much, there's so much stop on the aerial that it's like, what, what we're, what we're more used to, and, or better words, what we're more used to is even if it's a tracing of something, that somebody took five minutes to say, this is the activity that pertains to my application. So that we aren't scratching around looking for which building it is, and, and, and I kind of identify which the entrance, which is the backside, which is the front side, where's the sign, da-da-da-da-da. Just, just something a little bit more specific to the business at hand. And that's why I said, listen, if we're, if we're saying, fine, we'll, we'll adjust the standard for this application, then, then there should be something verbal or something in, in, you know, something in the text that at least defines these details that aren't on the plan, or, or aren't.
John, John, you know, one misconception that I had prior to you bringing up the aerial photo on your browser, I believe it was on your browser, John.
Yeah.
Um, was the location of Willimantic Road. Um, because on these photos, it would indicate that it's the bottom of the photo on the pages. And to that end, the photo, the photo in the, the packet, um, doesn't clearly indicate where the road is on the lower, larger photo. It does on the upper photo, but it's very confusing. So to not have a real plan of the whole site is just not, not something I'd like to see going forward, but I think we have enough information at this point to evaluate this application. And I wouldn't want to push it forward, but I would hope the advice that we give in the future would be, we need a, not a, not a real detailed site plan, but one that at least we can look at, get an idea of the totality of what's proposed there in one easy analysis. Does anyone?
I, I would, I would just say I relayed the exact same request to the applicant.
Okay, well, yeah, so this, I, I, I don't think we're, we're setting a precedent here. I think the precedent we're setting is, while this may marginally suffice this time, um, we want more detailed coaching in the future about what's necessary to submit, uh, an application for us to review. That said, I don't have any other questions. But Walt, do you have any questions?
I do. I do.
Very, okay.
Um, Jake, is your, your, um, application says that you'll be capturing wastewater and, um, taking it to the, uh, to some facility, um, as part of your disposal? And, um, and have you, have you reached out for any permits for, from the Willimantic Waste Treatment, or do you have any documentation from them accepting that, that water?
I, uh, sent the email to John, which they, I talked to Wyndham, which I believe was like five or ten minutes down the street. But they told me they cannot, uh, I cannot bring them their form until I get approval from the town and saying that my business is in ordinance with the town. And then once I get that, I could bring them, uh, the paperwork and sign up with them for that, and they told me it'd be per fifty-five gallon drum would be around five dollars and fifty cents to dispose of it there. And I did, um, send John the picture of the, how, of inside the bay and how it's gonna work with the water containment mat, with the barrels on top of a water, uh, spill contamination pallet, in case if the barrel ended up getting a hole in it, you know, the water has a place to get captured, so it doesn't go all over the ground, because I know that was a concern. So once it's approved by the town, I could go down and talk to, uh, and bring them the, the form that they need, which is a two-page form, and then I would be able to dispose of any, uh, water with them.
Now, John, I, this is more directed to you, and, and that is that I talked to Lynette at the health department. And, uh, what she said that she was gonna do is she was going to have a document that was gonna accompany the, the application tonight. Have you seen any updates or amendments?
There was a letter in the, in the packet from Glenn at the health district.
Is that, is that an updated one? Because it doesn't indicate the things that Lynette had mentioned. Lynette had mentioned it, just, just so that you, you get the gist of the conversation. There is no mechanism, there is no enforcement, per se, and you and I have talked about this, about whether or not water actually finds its way to where it's supposed to go. How much it is, quantifying it, qualifying it. And that being said, um, Lynette said that she could make, um, as part of their approval, um, that some, uh, disposal sheets documenting how much water is going into the waste facility could be part of this application to them, or is approval with them. And she was gonna have something at the meeting tonight. You didn't see anything come?
No, I did not. The only thing I got was that letter from Glenn Bogoyan, uh, dated May third. That's in the packet, that, that indicated his, his conversation with WPCA and his understanding of the, of the process that, you know, on the, on the, um, on the condition that, that's where the, the, uh, wastewater from the vehicle washing would go, and would be transported to WPCA, that they were, uh, okay with it. But if there was, if there was some additional requirement that, that is coming out of Eastern Highlands, I, I haven't seen it, but that's fine, and that's, that's on them to, to place on the applicant.
I see, is he fully complied with the Eastern Highlands requirements and received a permit for this that he wants to do in this process?
He, he has, um, approval for the proposed building use change, yes, from Eastern Highlands.
Including, including the wastewater disposal process?
Yes, per the applicant, yeah, the, the, it's, it's in the packet, um.
We have another dated third.
May third. That, and in that, in that letter, it's stated, and I can share this with you on the screen if you want. It's, approval is granted, uh, so it's right here, um, in the middle paragraph. Per the applicant, a contract will be secured to dispose of the auto washing waste for the town of Wyndham, WPCA. The proper containment storage and transport container will be provided with no wastewater disposed on site of, on the business property. So that, that is essentially the condition of their approval.
I have a question of the applicant. Um, Jake, Jake, um, so how many gallons of water per automobile would you typically use when you're detailing automobile?
It all depends on the variety of the size, but it, and it depends on if we gotta use a carpet extractor or not. Carpet extractor could be upwards of three gallons, and that has a three-gallon tank on it. And a small car could be five gallons, and a big truck could be upwards to probably eight to ten, possibly, so up to thirteen gallons if it was a large pickup truck with an eight-foot bed with, uh, full carpet.
So if you, would you be detailing five car, five vehicles a day on average?
Uh, probably be doing two a day on an average, because one bay is gonna be for detailing only. And if it's a bigger job where they're doing waxes and, uh, ceilings and all that, that could take a lot longer, because the second bay is gonna be used for audio installation, because that has a lift in or lighting. So if I'm doing underglow lighting on it, and then bay one would be specifically for tinting. So each bay would have their own purpose, because I only have one water containment mat. So that could only technically do one vehicle at a time, and if it takes, you know, you get a couple larger jobs, you know, you could only be doing up to two, maybe three a day.
So you're in a position where you have a terminal limit of a couple cars a day, maybe three on, on a good day? And, um, for detailing, for washing, and so you typically would have at least two or three days used, um, used, uh, before you fill up a fifty-five gallon drum, maybe a whole week?
Correct.
Bye, I'm just asking.
Yep. Oh, correct, you know, because obviously, days pending on when people are free to drop them off, you know, maybe the weekend might be slightly busier, because that's when people are more able to drop their vehicles off. But yeah, typically, I would say between three and five days, depending on, depending on the day, and I actually have two fifty-five gallon barrels, which I attached the picture to, or I sent it to John, which I believe John said he put in the packet as well, so I could hold, hold up to fifty-five, a hundred and ten gallons of water without having to dispose of it immediately.
Jake, thank you for that, because I, I gotta be honest with you, I was envisioning this, um, this business that you were running, that you were gonna be doing, you know, car washing and everything else in that tray, and, and producing a whole hell of a lot more water than I, I see now that, what you're quantifying for us. So thank you for that.
Any other questions for anybody?
And, oh, like, um, like motorcycles and slingshots, I would use like a waterless wash with like, because like, my personal slingshot, I cannot get wet because of the audio, so that I, you would use like the waterless wash with a spray bottle, that would be wipe on and wipe off. So some vehicles, you wouldn't even have any water to collect as well, so you know, it all depends on the job, you know, that one might take a little bit longer to do, per se, but there would be no water on the ground for that. And same thing with like motorcycles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's your, it's a pleasure. Do you wanna, um, just make a motion to any conditions?
I, I, my permit would be no conditions, I think, it, it, with, with the information he's given us and, and the scope of what he's doing.
Jake, we, we want you to be successful in Columbia. We appreciate you locating your business here. I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the. I'll make the motion that we approve the application as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Passes, thank you. Best of luck. Okay. Nothing under new business, John? Okay, regulation revisions. Justin, are you prepared to give some perspective or you're not?
I, I can give you a quick update. After our last subcommittee meeting, we kind of compiled some of the criteria that Walt, Rick and I were looking at. And I sat down with John and we went over that. He came up with, with basically a draft for the structure revision piece. Uh, which has some great elements into it, looking at how we regulate structures, what the minimum requirement should be. He put some verbiage in about, you know, do we have an unregulated category as well, which would give people a little bit more flexibility. So we're making headway. We don't have a finished product there, but we're making good progress. And then he's also, uh, we, we also had the same similar discussion on the subdivision regulation piece too. So, um, we're working on getting some information back from that. I want to, John, to go through and kind of get his perspective on it, which. Is greatly appreciated. So, uh, so we're making progress and, and, um, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Under item nine, communication reports, anything, John?
Um, I've, I've received nothing new. I would just also just remind folks as we're now almost halfway into the year. That commissioners are all responsible for land use training. Those, the training modules provided by UConn are available online, streaming on demand. And so if people are participating in that, I would just ask that you. Uh, send me an email letting me know which, which modules you watched and when, and I can make sure that we get that in our report.
Can I ask, Josh, can you just send like a, a word document or PDF with the links to the resources and a reminder to do it in the packet? For the next meeting, just stay on top of everybody. I need that. I know that. There has been a lot of. Discussion, I won't do this, I'm going to do this, I'm going on an open discussion. So we've received a lot of communication from the public, from concerned people about. Enforcement issue on Route Six with all the, the vehicles there. Um, and I don't have any update on that. I'll try and have a more in-depth update from. Our, our town administrator, first selectman and John about that enforcement action.
Could you be more specific about the vehicles on Route Six? What does that mean?
On the New Mac property, it's like they, they established a new used car lot there. And there's been a real explosion in the non-compliance with the zoning regs there and. I did, you know, I, I'd like to get a more up-to-date perspective and if there's any legal action that is being pursued. I'm, I'll ask to, um, put an executive session in the agenda for the next meeting so we can discuss. What legal action might be initiated, if any. I'm not aware of any, any, any imminent legal action.
Right, okay.
Anything else anyone wants to bring up under open discussion?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what you were talking about real quickly. One of the, one of my concerns and kind of wants on the commission is a little bit more oversight on the zoning enforcement piece. Um, and. And I'm public about this. Anybody who knows me, I go both ways. I want to protect the interests of the town and also protect people. Uh, who might be under zoning enforcement. Um, and I, I haven't really been satisfied since the time that I've been on as far as great communication with zoning enforcement and. Kind of just understanding the process, seeing where things are going. Um, you know, what, what's the end game for a lot of these things? So. My preference would be to start some direct communication with Connie and John on a regular basis. Um, to just kind of keep tabs on things to make sure that there is some oversight because that is our role. And frankly, to, you know, for the, for the benefit of anyone who's a zoning enforcement officer. So that there is some direction and communication. I think it goes both ways. I don't think we can be. Concerned from our end without giving some direction and, and reaching out with communication. So. My preference would be to do that on a regular basis. Um, I would love to be involved in that. Uh, but I think it's important and I think that it's something that's been lacking. So that's my comment.
How do we do that?
I think we, my preference would be to set up regular meetings and, and just understand the process. I think one of my big questions.
Part of our regular, part of our regular meetings.
You know, I, I, I just spitballing. I think, I think in the whole time that I've been on here, I, I haven't really. Connie hasn't been on here to speak to us, speak to these issues. I think that's important, but I also think we should have some. One-on-one discussions like we do with the subcommittee or, you know, in that realm where we come in and we kind of go through things.
I know the mind that if we don't actually. Map it out, detail how we're going to do it, it ain't gonna happen. Well, and that's all I'm saying. If you have any ideas about how we should do it or can do it.
Yeah.
Let's try and establish something.
So my, my idea, whether it's right or wrong, would be there's a calendar appointment. On a free, on a certain basis, whether it's monthly, whatever, so that that's set in stone. And there's an hour set aside to discuss zoning enforcement directly with our zoning enforcement officer. Or with a member of the commission. And, and that would allow us as well to fill in any gaps. Are there gaps? Are there things that we can do to help her do her job? Are there things that we need to have more oversight over? So the, the, the conversations would go in whatever direction they need to go. Uh, but I think right now with the lack of that one-on-one time is, is leaving things to the imagination. And what I don't want. Is, you know, applicants should have a, a smooth process when they come in front of us. And I think there was, there was a comment made in, in the public hearing, couple hearings ago about not being able to enforce certain things and, and us, you know. Maybe questioning certain applicants because of that. And, and we need to be cognizant of that and how.
So, so technically speaking, John, you are a zoning enforcement officer, right?
I'm sort of your, I'm sort of your, your backup, yeah.
Connie's like your deputy. She's not really our zoning enforcement officer.
No, 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 I, uh, Connie is a zoning enforcement officer. I, I am also empowered to enforce your zoning regulations. I, but you know, my, my role is basically in, in support of Connie at this point.
Hey, so would it be appropriate for us to ask Connie to have inter, interaction with us or would it be better to have it go through you?
Um, it could, it could be either way. I, I think, you know, I think Connie would just be curious, would want to. Want to know the sort of the parameters and expectations, you know, a lot of times if there's just basically a, 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 a monthly or a per meeting. Zoning enforcement report. If, you know, and if there were questions about any of the items, then, then we could have a more active dialogue. If, yeah, I'm not sure if Justin is talking about. A, a essentially, you know, a designated. Committee of, of one or more of the members to kind of be a liaison to the zoning enforcement officer.
How do you envision it taking place? Because you, I mean, you brought the point up. I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And do you see it being a fifteen-minute segment of a monthly meeting or thirty-minute segment of a monthly meeting? I mean, we're all in the same place when we have a meeting. So if we said every, every two months or every, on a sixty-day cycle. Or every thirty-day cycle, we had half-hour Connie's time on Zoom, is that a lot to ask? But could we do something like that?
I see it under two umbrellas. I think there needs to be a liaison, one-on-one in the town hall with. Someone from the commission and John and Connie, just to understand the process because part of, part of the issue is the process. The other piece is, I might be wrong, but I've done some research and it seems that on a regular basis in most towns. The zoning enforcement officer, you know, does a report to the commission on a regular basis. And as long as I've been on there, on the commission, it's never been done, other than us getting, you know, the list of zoning enforcement. The list and going over during executive session. So I think both things are completely appropriate, uh, when it, when it comes to.
So at this point, I've attempted to have a consistent report from Connie and. On occasion, I've gotten a copy of a spreadsheet without, with a lot more questions than answers. Um, let me reach out to her and have a conversation. I'll get back to it at our next meeting.
Okay.
And I'll interact with you, John, on this. We, we really need, and, and we did come up with an agreement, Connie and myself, that she was going to come up with a suggested framework for. Enforcement. Uh, so she had some guidelines as to how she handles complaints and so on. And that's not something I ever followed up with her to, to get in my possession. So. I'll take some responsibility for that, but it has been very hard to get information from her. And we really don't have an understanding of the totality of the zoning issues are in town. And, and then we have some really latent issues that have gone on for a long, long time. Like, they could be measured, not in years, but in fractions of generations. And that's not an exaggeration, you know, going on for ten, fifteen years in some cases and with no resolution and. We want to have some idea of what we can do to move, to create progress on those.
So we can add it to our agenda for next meeting to talk about it again a little bit. Until we got to a.
Most definitely enforcement. And John, if you could relate to Connie and I will reach out and call and talk to her. To say we really need to get, get this on the right path.
And if, just, just a suggestion, if we go put it under the guise of enforcement and oversight, oversight of the process, I think that that's a very important.
Well, yeah, we, we want, we want to understand what you're going on with the, with the enforcement and what she needs from us. And what we can do to help.
I think we need a, a better sense of what the town can do. Because you mentioned in the past, like if you take it to a lawsuit, it's, it's. Egregiously expensive and all together effective. So it's like. I think we need a better.
Nobody really wants to do that either.
Yeah, right.
I mean, literally, nobody wants to do that. I mean, I know one person does, but we, we have nobody that really wants to ever take it to that. Because it's uncomfortable and it's, and it makes somebody miserable.
Yeah.
Impacts their life and their home and it's just, so, so we got to have a system that works.
I, I probably don't quite share that view, but, uh, we, we've had limited resources that are effective. To enable us to enforce zoning regulations and. We do, we need to understand what we can accomplish and what we can't.
Yeah, that's the totality of the process. I agree with a lot of what you said. So, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Oh, the, uh, I, I sent around a, a, an offhand that I saw on paper.
I meant, I knew there was something else I wanted to bring up to say thank you for sending it.
Uh, I just thought it was an interesting perspective on the, uh, on the issue as far as. The fact that we have a lot of large homes, but now we have a lot of cases where we have, uh, small families or. Childs' families or. Is that there's a mismatch between what we offer for our housing in, in state line, not just specifically this down here, but. But, uh. You know, is, is it mean we need to think about zoning differently? I guess this was my takeaway from that.
I think that's what we're working on in, in the subdivision regulations. How can we, in our own small way. Make a contribution to making it more affordable to develop and build more moderate-sized structures.
Yeah.
That's, that's a very substantial focus of, of the subdivision regulation revisions.
The whole generation of, of people that just don't have plans to have kids.
Yeah, right, you know, so, right. And so it's, you know. We have all these nice, large, uh. Large structures which are. Particularly for younger people are becoming increasingly unaffordable. And, and also you don't need that, that size of it. It's not like, uh.
Why, I hear over and over in my business, I don't want a large lot to take care of.
Yeah.
I don't need a large lot. I don't, I don't want three acres. I don't want two acres. I don't want fifty-five acres for sure.
You know, what I do for a living, I'm starting to feel this.
So that, that's something that is probably a, a limited number of areas where we can impact that. But I think we're already focused on that as an organization.
Yeah, for sure. It was a good article and it's, I've seen several like that too. It's like so much of it is driven by zoning, so we need to take care of what we can.
You know, mu- much of the expense of, um, building homes is governed by sanitary regulation and building code issues. Building code revisions in the last year have added on average more than twenty-five thousand dollars to the cost of building each new home. And, and, and under the guise of energy efficiency. But if you mandate twenty-five thousand dollars in changes so that you can save another five or seven hundred dollars in fuel a year, is that. Efficient. I'm not going to come up with a perspective. I'm just posing that as a question.
And so we have, let's see if you're good, if you're buying out of those, say, a four or five percent mortgage. You know, what's, what, what's, what's the, the annual cost? The added, the added mortgage cost versus what you're going to save? My guess is that in a lot of cases, you're.
But if they've done this three times over the last ten years and now it's seventy-five thousand dollars more. Expensive to build a home than under the codes from ten or twelve years ago. And maybe there was a thirty percent efficiency in, in, um, energy usage. Is that, whose decision should that be? And I'm, I'm pulling these numbers out of my head, but they're actually probably pretty darn close to accurate. So, um, I thank you for the article. I read the whole thing and I'll probably read it again. Yeah, it's really good. And, and I would encourage anyone on the commission, when you see something good like that, send it along for all of us. It's nothing but helpful. Thank you. Audience of citizens, anything?
No, thanks.
Okay.
Very interesting.
Come to everyone.
Yeah. Next up, we have no executive session scheduled. Uh, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll say it.
All those in favor? Any passes, just for the record, our motions to adjourn need to be discussed.
Has anyone ever voted against a motion?